Action.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to come out of executive session.
I'll second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah, all in favor. Aye. Thank you.
And I'll make a motion to abate property taxes with interest and fees for the amount of $5,823.28 for the parcel located on Town of Lyman Tax Map Number Four, Number Zero Four, Lot Number Zero Thirty-Three.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Do I have discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And no one's opposed because it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
This is probably inappropriate, but I want to give you a hug.
Grateful for you. Thank you, sir. You're welcome. Can't wait to visit your farm. I will pick apples the fastest. I'm just looking at them. I will eat them the fastest.
We'll be moving along to Item Two, Public Input. Public in attendance will have up to five minutes to address the board. Please use the podium to address the board and please be respectful of others. The board may not be able to respond to questions and answers during public comment. If you wish to be placed on a future agenda, please contact the town manager. You're up, Michelle.
I sent you guys an email, Michelle Palacetti, Red Brook Drive. I sent you guys an email earlier today. It was something that, again, on my weird sleep this night, I do think. And when Joe had, was talking, a few things came around, had made a few announcements, it got me to thinking about the reach on YouTube. And when you start looking at the data, and there's data trackers when you get in there that actually show you how many people, it might say 100, it could be 50 people because someone might click on it twice. And you actually can then go in and look, and it'll tell you how long someone actually watched the meetings, which is fascinating. So typical meeting that may show 100, 150, it's really only 62 people that watched it. The max they watch is seven minutes, seven to nine minutes max. A lot of them are even less than that. So the reach that you're actually getting out there is not much. Our email mailchimp, I think, is up to, I think last time I inquired of the town manager a while ago, was like 600. Because that's important to comp, to know how many people are reaching. So you think if 600 are being reached, you hope when they're talking to someone, so that's maybe 1,200 if we're lucky. I'll say if they were one quarter, then 900, great. So then I come up with, and I came up with this, and I just took stuff that Joe has spoke about. Some of this is totally made up. It was just stuff I pulled really quick using ChatGPT to help come up with ideas for newsletters. And it was just like something that I didn't know if the select board was looking to reach people and make announcements about what's coming up. If they, it's a really simple format to follow, and just if there's information they want to get out, and it'd be cool to have a sitting on the counter for people who come in. So I just did these up just so you could see what I printed out.
Thank you.
Just to double slide it. Just place holders. And again, if you wanted to have announcements or information.
How often were you envisioning these going up?
Quarterly. I mean, I think quarterly is even nice. So you have like a winter one that talks about the winter activities are coming up.
So not monthly? Because I just saw July 2025.
Yeah, I just looked at that. So just, you know, I don't have the time to do it myself because I have, you know, I now, so I read for a living, so, and type for a living. But it was just really quick. There's stuff that you get, like, it could be information about ticks that's coming up for the spring section. It could be just the way, you know, a rundown of budget stuff quarterly for people to be aware of. That would be good information that people could walk away with, or is emailed up to at least 600 people. Just something I put together really quick. There's placeholders, the lost or found was just, that was something, a suggestion from ChatGPT that could be changed. Do you think it'd be an update on the fire station? Take part of theirs and put it in there too. You know, committee stuff, putting the committee in there, a little tiny area to give updates. Just, just a thought, made it up, and just wanted to know that the reach would be bigger with something like that.
I think it's a great idea. But like you say, you know, you thought of this thing in the middle of the night. I have those kinds of thoughts too, but I try not to write them down. But my concern is like, I don't have time to do it either. You don't have time to do it. I don't know if anybody does. I'd like to, I'd like to sit on this and think about it, and maybe put it on as an agenda in the future. Is that a workshop?
Great idea.
A workshop even?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to present it. The stuff that Joe did speak about was important, was good stuff that's relevant to the town.
Is this futuristic? Are the computers that we have, you mentioned ChatGPT, is there a way that, say if there was five of us, whomever else, the committees or whatever, is there a way to program that? So say we have a, whatever, a discussion or a thought process about this, that, or the other thing, that you could just talk into it and think it flurry down and basically collate in one?
Yes.
Yes.
One direction of this?
Copilot.
So I'm not inventing that?
No, copilot and ChatGPT against these things like that, like, you have to strike the accuracy.
That's it. That's what I would be like.
Longer than five minutes to talk about that.
Just a fast drain brain.
It's a tool versus a brain.
Yeah. But you can minimize it, and then, you know, maybe it would be a combination of each of you has a little quarter that you add stuff. It's fun stuff too, just, it was just a little thing anyways to put out there, just the bigger reach. If you're really looking to reach the public.
The York County Sheriff's Department put out a quarterly newsletter.
Yep.
I mean, I personally was thinking balloons, juggler, mine.
Almost got face panning them out. Sorry. But anyways.
You're volunteering.
I just wanted to know, like, how analyze the reach when it's just here and it's very minimal compared to what you get on the email blast and a quarterly thing might be kind of a cool thing to consider as you gather information. So, thank you for hearing.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate it.
So we can get that added possibly too, if, talk to you, about getting that added to an agenda.
Yeah, we can put it on a future agenda.
That would be great. Thanks.
If you want. Would you rather do a workshop, or would you rather bring it up and everybody can look it over, think about it, see how they want to go about doing it, and bring your ideas together out of either? Instead of a workshop, it's fine with me. I don't, either way, I am.
I think agenda would be fine.
Yeah.
Okay. It shall be done then. And now we're moving along to, we have mail in the York County Sheriff Quarterly Report. Because I don't actually see any mail. Unfinished business, franchise agreement updates, if any?
No updates.
None yet? Okay. B, discussion Kennybunk Pond Beach Gate Damage Repairs. We have updates on that, Lindsay?
Yeah. So the police were able to identify the person who did it. They're still conducting their investigation, but at least we have information we can turn over to the insurance company. So there is a $1,000 deductible, but basically the insurance will handle the rest. Once they have the information, they'll pursue that to get their money back. So that is taken care of. And then, in the meantime, we just have to figure out, what do you guys want to do with the gate? And you don't have to answer it tonight. You know, it could either be, we do nothing with it, we replace it with the reimbursement we get through insurance, we get a different gate, we leave it alone, whatever you guys think. I don't...
Yeah. I know that with it wide open, that there are, I mean, you see it on the camera probably, there's parties there, three in the morning, sometimes, and things. So I don't think leaving it wide open is the answer. But I also, I'm not, I'm unsure where to go at this time. I don't, I think the automatic gate was a great idea, but it has not panned out to be a great idea. Unfortunately, it does not work the way it should, as you know. How many, how much time have you invested in going and fooling around with the gate previous to it getting run over?
Right. Yeah, I mean, there was a lot of malfunctions and kinks and stuff.
I honestly see it going back to not the way it was before with the, with the gate. What I'd like to see is a big roller. And yeah, somebody has to open and close it. But that doesn't malfunction. And then it's closed. And when it's closed, there's no, there's no, there's no two ways about it. It's either open or it's closed.
If, if you guys do decide that, go that route, that's fine. I guess in the past, and either some of you know this or you don't, but we had an employee that would go down there at night and close it, and there was an issue with, like, basically rowdy derelicts giving them a hard time, and it was kind of dangerous, and they were threatening. So I don't want to put an employee in that situation. I would ask, if you guys want to do that, it would have to be someone on the select board, and maybe each year, you know, you guys vote or take a turn, who's going to be responsible with that?
Funny you should say that, because I was thinking the same exact thing.
Okay.
Because to me, that would be, that would be reasonable. Or even if, if everybody took a week and rotated, or something. But, I mean, we could figure that out. I don't, I don't want to put the pressure on. The other thing I thought of too is that we used to have a constable in this town, and I think there is a badge kicking around somewhere. And if we wanted to have a constable go open and shut the gate, I don't know. I really don't know what the answers are, but I really feel like it cannot be left wide open.
I feel that we worked out the bugs. I would have no problem putting that gate right back up, but adding a couple of cameras to make sure this gets nailed down that the next person that decides to rip it apart. I mean, we're, we're folding up everything that the committee did for the reasons of the parties and the drugs and everything else, because somebody vandalized. Well, I don't think the answer is to change it just because it was vandalized. I think the cameras that we put there will hopefully stop this from being vandalized again. Hopefully that person will be prosecuted. I'd like to know if we can get our $1,000 and any court fees or whatever back, whether it's small claims or what have you. That's, that's my thought. I don't think, I don't think changing everything because of bad actors is the way to go.
Okay.
We're falling into their mentality, per se.
Were the cameras changed from their original location? I think I recall that they were maybe lower than first recommended. Have they been, or have cameras changed where they were before?
I believe they were raised.
I think it was raised after it got, then, after that camera got whacked.
No, they're in their original location.
Really? I thought they were up higher on the...
Yeah. So, I mean, with the placement they're at now, we were able to get the plate number with the cameras. I think if you put them up too high, you're going to lose that advantage, and you would have to put cameras down below to be able to get plate numbers. So they're kind of at that position, so you can read plates.
Well, I'm wondering if we could put a camera right in the...
And we can.
The gate body itself.
You can definitely do that. You'll have to spend some money to do that. I don't know how much, probably a couple thousand bucks. And it adds to your remote managed services monthly rate. It's not...
Are we just discussing this, or do we have numbers somewhere that I can look at to help?
We're just discussing.
Yeah, thank you.
Dave, I'm with you in terms of change, not giving up on the automatic arms and all that. But just out of curiosity, I'd be wondering how much a gate has, Ricky is describing, how much would that cost? Is that something we can be looked into?
A rolling gate?
Yep. Instead of the arms routine?
A rolling or a swinging. A rolling's a little bit more money.
I feel like it's more, it's less likely to get driven through in that configuration. That's all I'm thinking. And I'm not...
It's less likely to be bothered by snow, maybe, or buildup or something like that. But if cars are going to damage it, they're going to damage it.
Yeah, I get it. And I know that it's always been, there's been issues there since time began, I think. But I don't know. And I hear what you're saying. I just, I don't know if I've ever seen one of those automatic ones actually be reliable for a period of time. I've, I see those in different places. For instance, at the Lincoln Motel, they have one for the people that live in the lofts, and it has no arms. It just, they don't use it because it didn't work out for them the way they wanted it to either. So I just, I'm not saying give up yet. I don't know what the future holds. So I'm glad it was, we can figure out who it was and carry forward, and let's figure it out when, when we get...
So why don't we table this for...
When we get paid back. Or it's underway, the investigation's still happening. So, yeah, I mean, we'll have to figure out what we have to, what we have to do, or what we want to do when, when the time is right. I don't, I think it's premature at the moment.
Yep.
It's just discussion.
Agreed.
So does anybody have anything else they want to say about that item?
Could we just ask to get the information? I think Lindsay already have it, was any calls out from the York County Sheriff out there before you put it in, and since you've had it, and I think that would be a big help.
Calls out for what?
Like for, calls for crime or whatever, drug, whatever.
Like I called in?
No, sorry. If there were any incidents that York County Sheriff's Office had.
Well, you guys get their reports.
Just to show that was, that it improved the situation, is what I meant.
Oh, gotcha. I don't know. Yeah, you get reports periodically. It's not in this one, but you had it in your last one, and it tells you how many calls, and it even specifies if it's a car accident, or...
But doesn't mention the location though, does it?
Would help support it, I think.
I don't know. I don't, I don't think they would, they don't, we're not a cop town, right? So they're not really obligated to give us a detailed report specifically on Lyman?
But they give us that, that's easy to disseminate the information from, and that is monthly. That's usually for the first meeting of the month. I think we got one last, the last two weeks ago.
Well, if you guys are okay with it, I'll see if I can get the information from Lindsay and go through and see if I can put some numbers together, if I get the dates from when it was put in.
Yeah, I don't, like, Joe's right. I don't think it has exact locations.
Oh, okay.
I'm just trying to think off the top of my head. I mean, I just, I don't know that York County Sheriff's Department's going to provide a report. We're not even contracted with them.
True.
I mean, they might, I don't know if they would be able to, like, they'd have to take data specifically for Lyman, and what they give us is more of a general.
We'd ask.
You can reach out and ask if you'd like. I mean, just call, I don't know, do you want to reach out to them and ask them?
Sure. It's just, I think, sorry. I just think the data that shows the difference helps make that decision. Do you know what I mean? Okay.
Good. Anything?
Comp plan is, we were supplied a very large database on crime in Lyman from Comp Plan. It was in not this last one, the one before. The other thing that happened is you have, we were state police, then we went to York, so you have that differentiation. We had both.
Yep.
I don't have, I don't, it's in the data packet. So if you want to look in there, there's a huge amount of data that were given on all the crime in Lyman.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, it's fine. That's good, good information. Is there any, any other comments on, on that? Item C, review, approve, Park and Rec Committee resignation.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Can I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, where is that? Where is that paper? Was that from the two ago?
Yeah.
That was the last meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any, any description on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? You're abstaining?
Yes.
So four ayes and one abstention? Item number four, Department and Committee Reports, Fire Commission, Fire Chief. We had a Fire Commission meeting last Thursday, and discussed some things. One thing that has come up in conversation is the speed that people drive through the village. The fire department's having a harder time sometimes getting out. People are not, they're driving too faster there. And I know at one time, we had, anyone who was on the board before, we had a Village Safety Committee who did things to address things. They had crosswalks painted, and they think they were responsible maybe for the speed bump that was out front of the library, and things of that nature. And I don't know what the answers are to that either. But how do we go about, one thing I do think has worked, some gets people thinking a little bit, is those portable flashing speed limit signs. I thought the four-way intersection would slow people down. How do you see it? I watched a fireman trying to go to the store and had to keep hopping back because people are driving so fast through there. You can't see them, and then all of a sudden, they're on top of them. So it was just something I wanted to bring up. I don't know, there's no answer to it tonight. I mean, we did briefly touch on some things in discussion, but there's nothing, there's nothing firm on how do you go about doing that?
I'm sure, if I recall correctly, wasn't there a time where speed tables, like temporary ones, were placed on John Street?
Yeah, I think we had, we had one, and I, I don't think it worked well. I think we had to borrow one, what, from the main DOT?
So main DOT sometimes offers them for free, but only when they're available for free. So they'll put, like, a, they'll put some information out on the listservs to say, you know, who wants this? You can have it for two weeks. So that's how we got one for, like, Kennybunk Pond Road and stuff. The one we have, okay, I'm getting there, I'm getting this, relax. We own one, and I just want to state yet again, it's broken, it doesn't work. Yeah. We should probably junk it for now at this point.
I don't know about you guys.
That's the, I'm sorry, one of those, your speed is machines?
Yeah. Because we had, we, just lost my train of thought, sorry. Still on the couch. So we had a, if we had one of those, it might help. I don't know. I get those MMA emails all the time, and, and they're offering things like that, you know, buy this, have this, I can get you a deal on these. It's just a thought, and I would beseech anyone that's hearing me, and hearing us talk about this, that drives through the village, to please watch your speed. I mean, I don't know what happened. And so what I wanted to discuss. We have a treasurer expense report, and we also have the comprehensive plan committee report that was submitted. Is there any comment on the treasurer expense report?
No.
Sounds like the Southern Main Planning has been good.
I'll address, we were hoping, as we had talked before, we were hoping that the plan would actually be ready to be voted on in 2026 with the gubernatorial. We received some disappointing news that just because of the way we didn't have the funding, SMPDC to take on other clients, that took up a lot of their time. So they're in the middle of projects with them. So after frank discussions with them, and we are still moving forward, I know that we don't, we have funding, we're on their list. We don't pick up with them until November, December, actually, December 4th is our next meeting with them to launch the next phase of the project. This will not be done in time for 2026, and we were all pretty disappointed. But, you know, I, I'm looking at it as a blessing in disguise because we have plans to actually have, basically, the packet will be at its final stages, but we'll be ready for '26. But at that point, we'll be able to have a table at the outside, of course, voting, which is the biggest, biggest election, and really have packets to hand to people, and be there to answer questions right then and there, and give what's going to be the final comprehensive plan just about to people there. So, and then we will hopefully even then, no, we're probably, we'll be asking for a special election so we can get it passed, because I know there is a deadline unfortunately with LD 1829, if I'm right, which is July 27 for towns. So for us to be in compliance, we have to have an election before then. So we will probably be asking for a special election once the Comp Plan is done. But we're even hoping to have that date to say that people at the gubernatorial look to, look for this vote in March or June, or whenever it's going to be, so we do hit 27, 2027 deadline. But again, we'll continue to have meetings, hearings. We will have another survey coming out. We have not received our final version back yet from SMPDC from the last chapters that we gave back some corrections on, which was about, they say climate change, and what they mean by that is your emergency response in your town, not weather. Housing, that's still a big topic, that we have a lot of short-term rentals, no long-term rentals, which is difficult for people around here. So these chapters will be coming back from us, will create a survey to go to the publics, they know what we're, the next section. I am compiling something from all our meetings from last year and a half, to have a synopsis to be able to have to people. So if there's something they're interested in, they'll know what we need to go to to watch it. I'm working on that right now.
That's nice.
Yeah. So I'll have that, I'll have a bigger and shorter version of it. And that's basically, by me, it's just been a great committee to work on. Really, it's been, it's been fantastic. And thanks to Tom and Peg for pulling some extra work to get some numbers together for us, and Kim found some stuff really quick for us. There's charts that show, those charts are showing Phase Three and how close it is to our town. It only runs a little bit into our town. So that's what those are, as you see the red things, lines on there. So we were just showing that, is that a concern as well, as we look at both areas, that we don't have Phase Three power in a large portion of the town. So that's basically where we are. Our next meeting is September 9th, for, that's where we're going to talk about survey questions, get started on it. That will be our next meeting to go over that and talk about our next phase with SMPDC. And December 4th is our meeting with SMPDC, when they're meeting with us to start the next big leg work of bringing everything together. And that's basically all I think.
Thank you.
Michelle?
Thanks, Michelle.
I'm sure. I have to remind you of this speculative question, but in terms of compliance with LD 1829, do you expect that is going to cost the town some money in terms of legal expenses?
We are lucky enough to have a really great contact, Senator Ewersen, I can never say his name.
Ewersen.
His, one of his people from his office, Hillary, is actually working with us. We have a meeting with her coming up. She is actually on the housing committee up there. So she actually, we had a little conversation with her about it. And so she's helping us make sure Lyman is compliant with 1829. And some of the questions will be, you know, if it is going to cost the town money to do extra. But we are getting some really good help from her to make sure we're in compliance, because there's, there's just these areas where it's really unsure. It does apply to us, but it seems so strange the way it's worded as usual. So, because it talks about sewer and septic, and it talks about public water, public sewer, but it's worded in a way that...
Very O bells and, and septic systems are the same thing. So it's convoluted, and we want her exact response and to make sure that we have it accurate, because if we don't get it right, it's going to cost us money to fix it afterwards. So that, we are on that path with her. I do have a meeting set up with her to go over things with her. She's going to keep us apprised all the way. She knows we're working with SMPDC, and that we're in the middle of our Comp Plan, racing into the 2027 deadline. So we're doing our best to stay on track and not cost more money than we've been allotted from the towns' folks to get this done. We're doing our best to do our work and get as much free help as we can.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you. I'm just going to back up before we get out of this item. Do you have anything you'd like to add to the Fire Chief Reports? Any, okay. Item five, new business? Reappointment Deputy EMA Director?
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Say aye?
Aye.
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 Aye, that's five. So, that's unanimous. Tom Hatch will continue to be the Deputy Emergency Management Agency Director. Reappointment Parks and Recreation Committee?
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And that's unanimous. And Holly Hart will continue to be the Parks and Rec Committee person. She's, I think she's been doing a great job. Did, did any of you guys go to the music in the park Thursday, after the storms rolled through? Did anybody try the Moses Italians?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Nice.
Very good. Can't wait for the next one.
Mm-hmm. Cool. Cool. Yeah, that's, that's big, how many people do you think were there?
Yeah, it was definitely more than the first one, yeah.
Oh, nice.
Yeah.
Okay. Cruising, RFP, CRFP, Town Hall backup generator upgrade. It's a request. The bids, they're going to be closing August 4th.
Yep. So I, at, uh, during the last budget cycle, and I know KJ wasn't on there, but, uh, we talked about the generator, when the power goes out, it does not power the whole building, so it actually doesn't power the heat, it doesn't power the, um, HVAC unit in the AV room. And we discovered this one winter when we lost power for three days, and after day two, we were like, it's really chilly in here, what the heck? And we realized it wasn't powering the whole building. And it's caused some problems when the HVAC isn't working in the AV room, it's caused some, um, backup batteries and stuff to blow up or melt down, or whatever, stop working. So I got a risk management grant that covers 3,000, um, for the upgrades, and then we can also sell the old one, which will help offset the costs a little bit too. Um, but it will be over 10 grand, so it has to go out to bid. And, uh, we guys, I think you guys put money in the CIP, which is the capital improvement reserve, um, to fund that for this year's warrant, so.
I appreciate that, refresher. That was, seemed like a long budget season, but.
I figured Carrie Joe would be updated, so.
Thank you. You answered all the questions I wrote on here.
Okay.
Is there, uh, any other discussion or?
Just a quick question, I know we keep possession of the current generator, uh, in order to sell it. Where are we going to, where is that going to be stored? Is? Or just, just put it aside?
Does the, uh, transfer station have backup power?
I think they do, I'd have to double check, I don't know off the top of my head.
Yeah, I don't think they do.
Yeah. It could be stored, we've stored items in the garage at the transfer station. You know, but I would definitely, once we get that sorted out, I would suggest putting that out to bid and try to get some money back for that.
The other thing we could do is maybe would, would just work out a trade, a trade-in with the company that wins the bid. And then we don't have to store it anywhere, it just goes away, and we get a little money off the bill. I don't know.
Would you put that in the RFP, like a potential for that, or?
Well, I already put the RFP out.
Oh, sorry.
And honestly, I just went by our electrical inspector's recommendation. He was like, I'll get you the information, and you guys can sell it. He was, that was his, he asked me, he said, did you, um, get a quote for like a trade-in? And he said it would be better if you sold it. So I just went based on his recommendation, because he's in the trade.
Right, no, I understand, I did the same thing.
Resale is better than trade-in.
Any other comments or questions concerning that? The minute? Review and approve meeting minutes from the 7th?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, yeah, so there was a change that, sorry, Joe, um, but Lindsay already made the change. It was the 944,000 something warrant, and it was.
Seven E.
Yes.
Yes.
And it was Amber's abstain, not mine, so she corrected that, thank you.
Yeah, so the one you're signing has the change in it, so you guys know.
All those in favor of approving the minutes with those changes?
Aye.
Aye. No one's opposed, because it's unanimous. Very. Warrants. Payroll warrant number five in the amount of $31,172.78.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Five to nothing, the motion carries. AP warrant number 59 in the amount of $25,501.64.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, yes, what's the budget document technology? Number 328.
I think it's the copier.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, yeah, it is.
Because we have the same, same company.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Any more comments, discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No, it's unanimous. And C, how much payable warrant number four in the amount of $500,145.18.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I would like to point, oh, wait, was that on the other one? Oh, it was on the other one.
I think it was on the other one.
Okay, nevermind, talk about the next one, sorry, my bad.
Any more almost discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No one's opposed, because the motion carries unanimously. So are we able to sign the things? Sorry, I feel like I just got all this stuff out here. Turn them this way, and turn them that way. Turn them this way, and turn them that way.
Lindsay's name's still wrong?
No, I'll check what you know.
I don't care. It's the warrant ones, I think, because it's probably like in the system that way.
Yeah.
These are.
Yep.
Thank you.
Number four. Nope. Big ones, no. Yep.
Okay.
My hands dropped a little bit.
There it is.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.